Good evening. Good evening, can you hear me now? Am I on? Okay. It is my privilege to call the Advanced Transportation District Regular Board Meeting to Order. Want to welcome everybody to our meeting in November. Thank you all for joining us. For those of you that are our guests, thank you for your interest in VIA's business. For our employees, glad to see all of you and thank you for the great job that you all do. At this time, I will do roll call. Trustee Morgan.
Here.
Trustee Bryant.
Here.
Trustee Perez. Trustee Thompson. Secretary Harrison.
Here.
Vice Chair Allison.
Here.
Trustee Gambetta.
Yes.
Trustee Ponik.
Here.
Trustee Morn.
Here.
Trustee Sadeo.
Here.
Have we heard from Trustee Perez and Thompson? Will they be? No? All right.
Well, Trustee Thompson will not be here, right?
He will not be here. And I think he's.
Okay. The Trustee Thompson is absent this evening and Trustee Perez is on his way. All right, at this time, if you all please take a moment of reflection. You all will please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Arndt, announcements?
None, right now, thank you.
All right. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Three, Consent Agenda, due to motion.
Your approval? Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item Number Four, Interlocal Agreement Between Bear County and the Advanced Transportation District in Consideration of a Resolution Authorizing Approval to Bear County for the Creation of a Local Government Corporation. Mr. Buchanan.
Good evening, members of the board. This evening, staff would like to have some discussions about entering into an interlocal agreement with Bear County for the formation of an LGC and the process there moving forward. We have briefed you on this several times and with us this evening is also Clay Benford as part of our legal counsel team to brief you on that. So if there are any additional questions related to this first step in the process moving forward, we'd be happy to answer that. And if we need to go into executive session, we can associate it with that.
Members, do we have any questions for Mr. Buchanan? If we don't, Dr. Gambetta, would you like to make a motion? I'm sorry.
I would just like to clarify that tonight, we're asking for the action to request the county to create the local government corporation. That is the move.
All right. All right, we have a motion in a second. Any further question or comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Ms. Elder, do we have a legal briefing?
No ma'am, we don't.
Members, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second to adjourn. Would anybody like to further discuss this adjournment?
Uh-uh.
All in favors, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ATD Regular Board Meeting is now hereby adjourned. At this time, I call the Regular Via Board Meeting to Order. Mr. Arndt, your report.
All right. I have a number of things to report, so I'd like to just start out with something more general. At the end of October, the Joint Base San Antonio Airshow returned to Randolph Air Force Base. VIA provided supplemental express service for the weekend to transport attendees from the downtown USO office and onsite shuttle services. We received a tremendous amount of positive feedback, including a glowing review from the commander of the 502nd Air Base Wing and Joint Base San Antonio, Brigadier General Robert LaBruta. And so I'd like to share just a piece of his letter. "The airshow in open house at JBSA Randolph turned out to be a spectacular event as approximately 265,000 people took the opportunity to witness the world's greatest air force in action. VIA provided transport for not only those patrons, but because you provided shuttle service from Fort Sam Houston and Lackland, we had over 3,000 technical training students who were able to come out and enjoy the airshow who would not otherwise have had that opportunity. So thank you for being such outstanding partners and thanks again for providing service needed to enhance our community engagements and make our 2015 JBSA airshow and open house a complete success. All the best, Robert D. LaBruta, Brigadier General, USAF." VIA's successful involvement was due to the hard work provided by bus operators and supervisors who assisted with the airshow. I have a few people here, I'll have you stand to be recognized. We want to specifically recognize our bus operators, Richard Campos, Santiago de la Rosa, Daniel Benitez, Arturo Cruz, and Theodore Fonda. Would you please stand to be recognized? There they are. I'd also like to recognize the dedicated bus supervisors who worked throughout the weekend, specifically J. Scott Johnson, Tony Estrada, Michelle Garza, Mark Vargas, Michael Cromley, and Jose Hinojosa. Please rise. There we go, right up front. Thank you. And finally, the planning and operation of the service was led by Tracy Manning, our manager of route planning, and Michael Ledesma, our manager of bus transportation. So if they please also rise to be recognized, are they here? There they are. So, a job well done. I saw the traffic out there that weekend and certainly the service was much appreciated by all those who were able to avoid that traffic themselves. After we'll serve as a host agency for the American Public Transportation Association Safety Committee Joint Midyear Meeting, that's a long name for a meeting, December 1st through 4th, approximately 40 safety committee members representing bus and rail transit agencies across the country will gather in San Antonio to discuss the latest safety and security measures, industry best practices, and federal updates. Group will be provided a tour of VIA VIA, Primo BRT Service Corridor, the Medical Center Transit Center, and the City of San Antonio's Emergency Operations Center for an in-depth overview of VIA's safety and security program. Vice President of Transportation, Alva Carrasco, and staff members from Safety and Operations Team preparing to coordinate this event. Alva, stand up. We're providing valuable network information, chair. So I joined the Safety Committee back probably before you were born. How do you like that? So it's really great to have them here. The National Transit Institute, or NTI, recently announced the development of the Transit Maintenance Leadership Workshop, a new professional development effort designed for senior-level public transit maintenance leaders. The workshop will be held December 7th through 11th in Dallas and was created in response to an identified industry need through a survey of more than 250 transit professionals. NTI accepted applications from across the country and I'm really proud and happy to say that Fleet and Facilities Analyst Daniel Rodriguez III was selected. Daniel, please stand up. We know, Daniel, we know you'll represent VIA well, and also just so everyone knows, Daniel is the son of ATU Local 694 President Daniel Rodriguez Jr. Is that right? So this is another generation following, as we've seen before. A Transit Cooperative Research Program, or TCRP, is designed to broaden, strengthen, accelerate, and introduce the adoption of the results of research within our industry. The Conference of Minority Transportation Officials, or COMTO, manages the TCRP Ambassador's Program to promote research results through peer-to-peer contact. And so it's my pleasure to again recognize Alva Carrasco, who has been selected to be a TCRP Ambassador. Alva? As an ambassador, she will serve as a liaison between TCRP, its member organizations, the research community, and transit properties. She will assist transit properties in exploring the latest developments in technology, innovative management techniques, and best practices. So congratulations, and the industry will benefit from that. Thank you, Alva. All right, last quarter, we announced, I'm sorry, last month, we announced that we have put together an Operator of the Quarter, a Maintainer of the Quarter, and then Support Administrator of the Quarter. Last quarter, our Operator of the Quarter, I'm sorry, Rogelio Dominguez was not available. Are you here today? There you are. Please stand, we're gonna, hope we're gonna take a picture with Rogelio. He's been with VIA since 1994, 17 years of bus operations experience without a preventable accident.
Wow.
He's the winner of the most recent bus rodeo. So if you'll come forward, we have an award for you. Sorry.
Congratulations. Very proud of you. Thank you for making this look so good with your safety record.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our first quarter van operator, the first van operator of the quarter is Joyce Gonzalez. Joyce, come on up. Joyce has been with VIA for 27 years. She apparently had just gotten her driver's license. She's had no preventable accidents since 2002, has won a certificate of merit for 19 years of safe driving, and so that's fantastic, another great safe operator. Sammy sets the bar for all employees of the Fleet and Facilities Division. He's qualified for all 11 rounds of the Employee Excellence Awards by maintaining perfect attendance, safety, and disciplinary records over the last eight-year period. Sammy's extremely professional, carries out his work with great attention to detail. Ralph Marston once said, "Excellence is not a skill, it's an attitude." Sammy displays that attitude. Come on up, Sammy. Actually, we announced this last month, but the winner again was not able to be with us. The VIA Rodeo 2016 Celebrity Bus Rodeo First Place Winner and second year in a row, Lester Bryant. Lester, we have your plaque, why don't you come up with, have your picture taken, come on.
Lester, you just keep making this. After a rodeo championship. If you get him when you're here, we'll get him.
They'll get you first.
Sit on the chair.
It's only Lester's chest that fits.
Looking for a three P. No doctor. Get him next year.
I'd like to introduce the Board of Trustees to the newest member of VIA's family, Steve Young. Steve, stand up. Steve started at VIA on November 2nd as our new Vice President of Information Technology. He comes to us from the Judson Independent School District where he served as a Chief Technology Officer for nine years. Before that, he served at Northeast ISD as the Assistant Director of Network Services. Steve's experience is timely as we undertake many key projects, including the Enterprise Resource Planning System, the Enhanced Digital Access Communication System, and Electronic Document and Control. And so please join me in welcoming Steve to our family. Congratulations are also in order for VIA Senior Vice President of Legal Services, Bonnie Prosser Elder, who was selected as an Honoree in the Civic Leadership Category for the San Antonio Women's Chamber of Commerce 2015 Constellation of Stars Award. Over the years, Bonnie has devoted time and resources through organizations such as the San Antonio Bar Association, Leadership San Antonio, the San Antonio Sports Foundation, and the Jack and Jill of America. Her efforts to advocate for, connect with, and ultimately empower others make her truly deserving of the award. You are of great value to VIA in your day-to-day capacity as our chief counsel and even equally great, if not greater, to the community at large. Thank you so much, Bonnie, and congratulations. And finally, as I always end, with an award that Hope has won. I want to offer congratulations to our Board Chair, Hope Andrade, who received a Top Latino Leaders Award from the National Diversity Council. She received the award as part of the inaugural Latino Leadership Conference on October 28th at the Institute of Texan Cultures. The conference was held to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of Latino leaders in the corporate, government, academic, and nonprofit sectors. So congratulations on yet another award, chair.
Thank you, thank you very much.
And I'd simply like to wish everyone a great Thanksgiving. We're all thankful, I'm thankful for such a fine board and really thankful for the great staff that makes VIA come together every day.
Well, that's very appropriate since this is a time to be grateful. And so, at the end, we will all make our wishes for the holiday season. All right, moving on to citizens to be heard.
Madam Chairwoman, we have one citizen to be heard tonight, Ferris Hodge.
Thank you very much. You know, I didn't know we was, I was having our board meeting tonight, and I went to go see Mr. Gary, but he wasn't here. So staff said, you know, we're having the board meeting tonight. I said, no, I forgot all about that. But anyway, I'm here. I've been coming over to VIA board meeting 30 years, when y'all didn't help hardly anybody. Now, let's talk about the Primo bus. Those Primo buses downtown, the bus shelters do not have the name of the different route. You have Medical Center, you have Elvis Road, you have UTSA. Anyway, you have all these different routes and they just say Primo. Information Center, I think it's 111 West Commerce, Veterans Day, y'all had that place shut down tight. Every bus stop that got off, somebody wanted to go to the restroom, they wanted to get a drink of water, they wanted to get some, you know, different things. And y'all should never shut that information center down at all. There's always a lot of people catch that bus. Okay, now, the next thing is Veterans Day. The buses, we didn't know whether they was on the regular schedule or the VIA schedule. And I asked the driver, I said, is this a regular schedule or is it holiday schedule? And he said, it's the regular schedule, but VIA pays $8 for driving the buses. And I said, well, that can't help us out. The disabled, the buses need to be a little bit wider in the front, because we're having these big wheelchairs, and it's running up against the bus fare box, and sometimes the drivers can't get out, so y'all need to do something about that. The next thing is, whenever we put money in the fare box, say like $1.35, and we put in $2, y'all don't give us our change back. Y'all ripping us off, and y'all need to, I need to stop doing that. And the next thing, y'all forcing your employees off, your customers, out of the information center after one or two hours. And this lady was about 82 years old, maybe older than that, and it was almost 100 degree weather. But anyway, she sat there two hours trying to stay cool. So the lady, VIA Trans or whatever the police said, you have to go. And she said, it's too hot out there. She said, well, it's not my policy, I didn't make these stupid rules, uh, VIA did, but you still got to go. And I talked to Judge Wolf today in the Commissioner's Court and other people, and they're gonna investigate y'all. I did get a letter from y'all. How can you throw somebody out that's not doing anything? At the bus stops, y'all running, we're off the bus stop. You're supposed to be going after the gang bangers, the crazy people, people on that cush, and that fettuccine they call it, and it knocks them out. And then some of them, they violent. We're in the midst of all these crazy people downtown. So I told Judge Wolf to tell VIA to leave us alone. Y'all have a nice day and a good Thanksgiving and all that good stuff. And eat some of that turkey for me, too.
You, too, Ferris. Happy night.
Madam Chairwoman, we had one other citizen sign up to be heard, Damon Mason.
President Arndt, Chairman Andrade, VIA Trustees, me, say it is I, Damon Mason. As you know, Thanksgiving is only a few days away, and winter break 2015 is not far behind. While this calls joy for many people, it's a reminder of how I overplayed my hand back into 2012 because I did not want to be chased off the fence by the Antrak fleets without cause. Even though those three years in the rearview mirror, I cannot shake this French, nor less I learn from that, which is what I wish to share to you tonight. VIA, I'm still very upset at your decision to scrutinize a gaslight me instead of facing the fact that a mainline transit operator on your payrolls is at the helm of a 30,000-pound higherbred mainline motor coach with a funny picture of Andrade here to prosecute. If you plan to behave your customers in this manner, when they bring someone to your attention that demands for dress, you will not last very long because that's the nature of this business. In fact, you'd be very worried when you get nothing but positive feedback. After all, that which sounds too good to be true, most likely has at least one aspect that is too good to be true. The crew at the helm of Titanic thought it could win a jousty match to get with an iceberg, or they did not need to deviate out of its way by a large marten to avoid that iceberg. Well, we can research for ourselves what the epilogue of that was. Have some humility, VIA, it will, like my dad says, put some hair on your chest. VIA, you need to really learn to want what you already may have. Your plan to revise structural design and architecture at Randolph Park arrives a definite step in the right direction. Still, my only approval is that you should do more of that everywhere. If you had built Central Plaza as an open-air gathering area for people to interface the public transit without all the overpriced artwork architecture, you would have a lot of money left over to manage. Once a function aspect squared away, then and only then does it make sense to add a bit of decoration. As things stand now, Central Plaza is an slightly ego trip where I find myself in one of a bar bag and it oozes a complete with 300,000 rounds, ammunition rounds to keep the boogeyman away. And no, this feeling does not go away when it's during the day. VIA, function first, form second. If you heed that counsel, you will not waste so much money and you would have more supporters of a thin wall variety. Look at how you avail the area on the interstate via duct that crosses over the McDermott Freeway. That's firing the pipe up with the idea of a parking garage with equal number of, was of low ground levels and above ground levels. Why are you not investigating that? I piped with two good locations for such a party. Randolph and Crossroads. If you cannot do it both at one time, I understand, still, I want you to do some research into that. Ingram Park Mall has a bunch of unused parking area. Investigate the possibility of relocating the Ingram Transit Center there and possibly constructing a parking garage, equal number of, equals number of below ground levels and above ground, like I mentioned earlier. Okay, so anyway, here on the back of this handout, I have here some counsel about Crosswood Park Ride, Randolph Park Ride, the Old Calle Lacun Park Ride, the Ingram Transit Center, and the Mad, and the Madla Transit Center. So, 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 you know, so. So I'll leave this here. View both sides.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chairwoman, there are no more citizens to be heard.
Okay. Mr. Arndt, did you have an additional announcement?
Before we, before we move on, I'd like Dan's family to please stand for a second. So first of all, your grandfather is the President of the Union, and now your father is a leader among maintenance. That's two generations, so at least one of you need to follow up and really wow this organization in the future. But we're very proud to have your family so involved in this organization, and particularly in this case, your father being accepted in a very competitive program to be one of the first leaders in the maintenance program in the country. So thank you for giving us your family, and we look forward, like I said, to yet another generation joining us. Let's all recognize them.
All right, moving on to Consent Agenda. Members.
Move of approval?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any comments, questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to bring your attention to both Items F and N. Included in the Consent Agenda is the recommended fiscal year 2016 audit plan, which we went over. There are some changes and upgrades.
You need to put your mic on.
The Audit Committee met on December 9th, went over next year's audit plan. In addition, we're in the process of evaluating the, what is this, what's his name?
The Audit Director.
The Audit Director, and that, we're gonna have a special meeting between now and the next meeting, and that'll be done. But I wanted just to point out that the Audit Plan for next year is part of the Consent Agenda, and there are some changes to that.
Great. Thank you for bringing that to our attention, and thank you for your leadership on that Audit Committee. I noticed that you needed a lifeline from Trustee Ponik.
That's for the...
Maybe just call our friend.
Becky, would you have been his friend? He could have called me. All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you very much. Item Number Seven, Central Plaza Opening, Ms. Benavides.
Did I say six?
Oh, I'm sorry, Agenda Item Number Six.
You're it. You're filling.
Yep. Thank you. This is an exciting week for VIA as we celebrate the opening of Central Plaza with three days of events starting this Thursday. I'd like to take this opportunity first to simply thank Brian Buchanan in the Planning Department, our consultants, Creative Civilization and HNTB, and all of the individuals and divisions within VIA who have helped and are helping as we speak to make sure that these events are a success. And of course, guidance from our President and CEO, Jeff Arndt, and from our esteemed board, so thank you. On Thursday, the 19th, we will have an employee appreciation event from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. at The Grand and at Central Plaza, where we will invite employees to take the first official tours of the Central Plaza and visit at The Grand, where we will have food and refreshments and activities with which we can enjoy time with our coworkers and colleagues and discuss the beautiful plaza that will have chores every 30 minutes for everyone who can attend, and also commemorative item with a letter from our President, which will go out to employees tomorrow. Key activities there, as we mentioned, and includes an invitation to explore Central Plaza also on Saturday for our grand community celebration. On Friday, we have the dedication of Central Plaza. This is Friday morning. We will welcome, we will have welcome and remarks from local leadership and dignitaries, including our VIA leadership, past and present. Speakers will include our county judge, our mayor, Councilwoman Shirley Gonzalez, who represents District 5, where Central Plaza stands, our esteemed chair and president and CEO. We will enjoy an original poem from poet laureate Carmen Dafoya, a performance from the Guadalupe Cultural Arts Center, time capsule presentation, and also dedication plaque presentation. Our community celebration on Saturday, for which we've done great public outreach to writers, to partners, stakeholders, and the VIA family. And you can see one of our dynamic digital boards there near the 1604-281 interchange. We've gotten a lot of positive feedback. I hope you've had a chance to see that, as well as our print and other digital advertisements, all made in an effort to reach as many folks as possible. Have them come out to the Central Plaza. venue to do that. We'll also have a public art event, some performances, and, gosh, those are the highlights. It's just so much. But those are definitely the highlights, and we're inviting the Via family to please come out as well, and to meet our writers and to meet our community, and have a great big celebration on Saturday.
Members, any questions, comments? I will share with you that, Ms. Benavides, you've done, you and your team have done an exceptional job.
Thank you very much.
You know how hard you've worked on this project. And also to our partners, HNTB and Creative Civilization. I was at another meeting earlier today where Creative Civilization was bragging about our Central Plaza, and I got to see the tower, which looks beautiful lit.
Absolutely.
Mr. Arnt has had a chance to see it, but he has not invited the chairman to go over and see it. And I saw little bits of the video, so.
I'm so glad.
I'm real excited. I think the Board will be very proud of the work that has been put in, invested in this project, and, and I'm looking forward to a Thursday. Is it Thursday or Friday?
Friday. It's Friday, yes ma'am. Thank you all so very much. Are there any questions?
Just a couple of quick comments. There are some, there's a digital billboard also off of I-10 close to the actual Central Plaza. I think that's very good. I've seen it flash many, many times. Two things, real quick. One, have we reached out to some agencies in the regional area, like Austin Capital Metro, possibly inviting them over? Corpus Christi has a project coming online next year that's similar. Maybe we can reach out to them, maybe they'll give them a little bit of, I guess, motivation to keep on going in the particular items that they are going to undertake.
Thank you for that suggestion. Our Director of Local Government and Community Relations has done a great job doing outreach both locally, regionally, to our state partners and leaders, even to our federal partners and leaders. I can inquire with him specifically about other regional areas that may have been invited to this event, and if not, I think it's a wonderful suggestion. I'll speak with our Chief of Staff about maybe looking into doing that if it hasn't already been done.
And also, if you can also add the airport senior leadership, too, I would prefer also them being reached out to for, because they know we're all connected in this town, so.
Absolutely.
Should show them. Thank you very much for your work.
Thank you for that.
Members?
I just tell Trustee Harrison that I personally invited all the agencies associated with the Texas Transit Association and with the Southwest Transit Association. So I think we're pretty covered, as far as at least inviting people, and I've been sending them pictures to pique their interest.
Very good, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you all.
All right, the time is now 5:35 p.m., and the Via Metropolitan Transit Board of Trustees will officially go into a closed executive session. The items that we will be discussing during this executive session are as follows. Item seven, entitled Lone Star Rail Agreement, which is an executive session item pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, entitled consultation with attorney. And item number eight, entitled legal briefing, which is an executive session item pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, entitled consultation with attorney. All persons who are authorized to attend this executive session, please proceed to the small conference room. It is now 6:05 p.m., and we're officially coming out of an enclosed executive session regarding Agenda Items Seven and Eight. No deliberations of public policy or vote-taking occurred during this executive session. Well, members, we've come to Agenda Item Number Nine. And before I ask for a motion, I want to, like I said, this is a time to be thankful, and certainly I'm thankful for having the opportunity to work with all of you, and Jeff, with your great team. It's been a great year, and looking forward to lots of more great things and announcements. And also, I'm sure that we all have a heavy heart with what's going on around the world. And so I ask that you all enjoy these holiday season, be safe, and, and let's be grateful for what we have. So with that, yes, sir?
I just wanted to acknowledge Ross Malloy and Joel Assard from Lone Star Rail are in the audience today. You sort of pulled your hands up. To acknowledge them and thank you for coming tonight, and they are available to answer questions.
Thank you very much for your presence tonight. We certainly appreciate Trustee Gambetta's time at Lone Star Rail, and I will tell you that we look forward to working with you. So members, do I have the most important motion? Actually, it's early, so if you'd like to discuss anything else, I'm open for it.
Oh.
Oh, it's not on the agenda. I am, I am restricted.
Oh, yeah. There you go.
Call the question.
Call the question. So do we, do we have a motion?
Move adjourn.
Do we have a second? Anyone would like to discuss this motion or this second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you all very much. Be safe.
Thank you very much. See you in a minute.
Thank you.
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 Thank you.